Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
We will convene as Board of Supervisors. I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Show me.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Deb, would you read the minutes from the previous meeting, please?
July twenty first, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage Trusts. Review the minutes from the Drainage Meeting, see the Drainage Trust minutes on the county website. Chairman Rasmussen called the meeting, regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine fifteen a.m. Members present were Bosch, Rasmussen, Luke's and Ellis, with Pluse present via Zoom. Motion by Pluse, second by Ellis to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of July fourteen, twenty twenty five were read. Plans for payment. Tiffany Pullman, Wright County Communications Director, presented a wage adjustment for an employee that started in April. The employee has completed training for the position and is doing good, Pullman explained. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Pluse to approve the wage adjustment for the Communication Center, motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the Secondary Roads Department. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Luke's to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? Stand approved as read. Claims have been around. Anybody from the public like to speak? Okay, moving on, review and act on resu- resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven to designate voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties.
And this was what we were discussing about, uh, the Iowa Community Services Association as Jennifer Sheehan, uh, selected, to my knowledge. She is not an employee of Wright County any longer. And then, uh, Betty brought to the attention Iowa Environmental Health Association, that possibly that should be Jamie Russell. Well, I guess I wouldn't, uh, assertate that this had, I don't remember what the emails said. I don't believe there was a in November.
And actually should be on the Iowa Community Services Association.
I think when?
Yeah, finalize, please submit the finalized resolution, uh, by September first, twenty twenty five. So, uh, I would I'll wait for further discussion, but, uh, my plan is to move for, um, to table this till we figure those two things out. Is there?
I would second that motion, um, to table it. As I would like to find out also, because I know that we, yeah, as far as Jennifer Sheehan.
Right.
Um, so.
Their motion by Dean is second by Betty to table this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all ayes. And?
Deb will, we'll track down the information and let you know when he'd like to send it back on the agenda.
Perfect.
Review, review and act on Purdue Pharmacy LP participating form for national opioid litigation and designate Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor to sign.
Do you know if, uh, Eric Sidenson, or have we received any emails concerning this?
I know there's been emails and mailings that have come and went between Eric Sidenson, Amanda and I don't remember who they were coming from, but from the litigation. Because I got one of them forwarded on to Eric and, and Amanda.
And it's through ISAC that's requesting the?
That I do not know. Just know that, yes, Eric Sidenson is, has been involved in the mailings and emailings. Because he actually said to put it on the agenda, so.
Okay, because I had, I tried to read through it, but I didn't really see what the change or what the amendment was for it. I didn't, it took a lot of legality stuff that I wasn't really quite sure on.
Seems to me like we were infod on, I'm just reviewing my, scanning my emails to see if I could see something on, I guess I should type in, uh, opioid.
Well, Rick, is there anything in your binder, on your folder, or no?
The only thing that she has that we did not put in the folder because um, Rick has a tendency just to go through and sign stuff, and we didn't want him to sign, we were going to designate Amanda to sign. Um, so we did not put it in the folder, but it was in a packet that was emailed out.
Mm-hmm.
Sidenson, this was on where, when, where do you see that? Thank you. On March twenty first, uh, I think the action you take on Monday should be pretty important. Just a motion to agree to be included in the proposed amendment. But we'll plan on being available by phone if you need me for any discussion. I also need to let the opioid law firm know by Monday afternoon, uh, what you've formally decided.
That was a different one.
Oh, was?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Pharmacy Benefit Managers, oh yeah. But I don't have any answers for you.
Does it need to be decided on today?
I'm getting, I don't know what the, the status was.
So the, when I forwarded an email that we got with all this information into Eric, for some reason it came to me. Um, he says basically at this point, I think there should be an agenda item added to one of the next Board of Supervisor meetings to ask for them to review and approve the opioid bankruptcy settlement for Purdue Pharma. As recommended by the national law firm representing us on the case. Then whoever is authorized to sign the documents by the Board of Supervisors can do so and return them as indicated in the documents. It looks like they provide an electronic method of signing also, which may be simpler. I would suggest letting Amanda know you've got these documents. I did. Um, she would be able to refer back to her July ninth email for further explanation.
I would make a.
Saying that, yeah, we, we agree that they're.
Yep.
They're.
I would make a motion to approve the Purdue Pharma LP Participation Form for National Opioid Litigation and designate Amanda Meyer, uh, authorized to sign.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Adam.
Update this week, um, guys are out still, uh, checking routes, uh, for excessive water. Fixing those routes, fixing FEMA routes, uh, routine maintenance on gra- on granular roads when possible, uh, after all doing all that, um, trucks hauling the rocked FEMA routes. They're also hauling some, uh, what we call, um, like a ditch clean, like a granular ditch clean after a FEMA event, so we have to clean it out, and then we haul that, uh, material to a level B. It's because it's got granular in it, so, but we don't reuse it on that route, so we reuse it on a, um, a level B. Uh, they also stockpiled some shoulder up material in Belmont to do, believe, two hundred forty seven tons, so that they can do, uh, kind of spot, spot shouldering on the east side of the county. Sixteen work orders are completed. Uh, they got six more routes done on the segments for the hauling objectives this week, and then just kind of an update of storm damage, water over roads on seven nineteen, seven twenty three, so. Anything else? Construction wise, we're still at a standstill, a lot of water going through those, both those bridges, uh, Boss Quarry Bridge, uh, they're still waiting to, for the water to go down to be able to do the east or the west side of, or, uh, under the bridge area for revetment, so, um, once that goes down, we'll get them back as soon as possible, but both of them.
So we probably missed, uh, three weeks, so our estimate, if they were able to start on it next week sometime for the first September or not.
I would say a month, yeah. I would say if they, if they were able to, the water, if you didn't get any more water, and it went and receded to normal levels, that a month would be, because they still have to do both, uh, approaches. And then also the, um, the.
They can't do the approaches until the dirt works done on the west side.
Yeah.
And the same contractors doing the east and west approaches, I assume.
Yes.
So you won't mobilize twice.
Correct.
Um.
We've already paid for some mobilization, extra mobilization for erosion control and seeding um, on that east side, because I didn't want, because it's such a steep slope on both of those, that I wanted to get, make sure they got some hydro seeding on it, so.
Good. Alright.
Yeah.
Then we'll call for them to be able to do that.
No, they gotta be able to see, so six hundred tons of the riprap is in the stream right now.
Yeah.
And they want to reuse that to pull it back, so we call for twelve hundred tons, they're using used all twelve hundred tons already, so they've got to remove that to put it back, so.
So that bridge that was going to be done earlier, we hope, now we're going to be done later.
Thanks to, uh, Mother Nature. Mother Nature. I think we ran into, um, update on paving, uh, R thirty three C fifty four paving, uh, sounds like they're going to start milling that fifteen miles, uh, around August eighteenth, as of right now, so that isn't updated.
And their estimated time to, I mean, will that be?
I'll have to get back to you on their, their construction time, um, milling shouldn't take that long, because they're just three inch milled, it's just more hauling away. Um, but, and then paving after that, we should be, I mean, the nice thing is the asphalt paving, you can get right on it. Even if they're gone that night, you can drive on it.
And same company milling and?
Uh, no, 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 two different companies. So I'll have, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any old business?
Adam, I just wanted, uh, to tell you that the, the C seventy shouldering, it was very badly needed and it, it helped a lot.
When you said it last week, they were actually on it. That mixture on Facebook was C seventy.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
No, it, it's.
Yeah, they were just going to ask your, your partner, asking me, when you said it.
It makes a world of difference.
It, it does, and honestly, I was, I'm very surprised, so.
Like to go back to the road when there isn't that shoulder in there.
Oh, yeah.
That you're in for a ride.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to figure out a way to, uh, try to make it stay longer.
Yeah.
Um, with maybe some calcium chloride, but that does take quite a bit of calc- calcium chloride that we've calculated, so. But maybe we can do some test sections and see, because it takes quite a bit.
What is that product? Um, I always see it on Facebook that pops up that where you have your landscaping pebbles, and then they spray that stuff over it to?
Yeah, yeah, uh, like a glue?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a glue, but I don't know if it would go down the way, like, it might just keep that surface glued.
Oh.
And you got all that stuff below this, so I have a feeling with uh, it's probably good landscaping, because you're not driving on it, but once you drive on it, you might break that stuff.
Break that seal.
Gotcha, yeah.
So, yeah.
Any new business? Meetings? I had Eldora Friday by Zoom. We're doing some changes, we're trying to do, it's been interesting.
Met with, um, and I think all of you guys did, Twin Rivers Exploration last week.
I went out and looked at it with Adam and Nate on Highway three.
Yeah, they are doing the seismic testing right now on Highway three.
All the state highways.
On the state highway, Highway sixty nine and Highway seventeen, but they're actually doing it on Highway three right now.
Yeah, doing it on Highway three, uh, they will be going, um, you know, the intersection out here, Highway three and sixty nine, the curve. Uh, they'll be extending their, uh, onto the gravel route there to twentieth, all the way to Thompson. Um, they're also going to do two tenth from Quincy to Highway sixty nine. And then also from Highway three on Reed up to two hundredth. So, for gravel routes in our county.
Was that the?
That was that updated map.
That was the updated map, okay.
Yep, so, and I've sent them all their information about culverts and any work orders, tile crossings that we have in that area, that area, um, or all those routes. Uh, so they know what those are, um, I was told, what was it last Thursday, I think it was, that when, uh, they're doing Highway three, they're not just going to do all the pave, they're just going to go out on to two hundred and twentieth street, so they won't stop and then come back and do the grabbles later.
And where I saw them doing it on Highway three, they were actually doing it right on the shoulder adjacent to the road, where they weren't on the paved portion.
My understanding, they went through town this weekend, so they would have to do it on the paved portion. So, I think it was Sunday that they went through town.
Yeah, they went through town on Sunday.
Yeah.
So all of the supervisors have met with, uh, Twin Rivers or not?
With the same.
The same discussion that Betty and I had with?
Yeah, yeah.
Those.
In, in, in reference to the drainage tile and what?
Correct.
I was going to update the other three. I updated Rick a little bit while I was driving. I'll update Ashley and Lynn, so, um.
Is that something that we need to discuss now, or?
You can, I wouldn't say, I, I, I guess, I mean, there was nothing decided, there was nothing that.
Right.
It was just information for you guys to, to talk about, uh, the idea of, uh, if, they do have insurance plans that we talked about. Um, insurance plans make it very difficult to get money out of an insurance bank, because that's the business that they're in, they don't want to pay for, uh, uh, any damage that could be possible. Uh, there was conversation about, uh, an escrow account, uh, possibly, we just don't know the monetary amount that we would like to see in that escrow account. Um, I talked with Ryan Wyman and the other, actually had a Zoom call with Ryan and Jamie, Webster County Engineer and, uh, Hamilton County Engineer, and discussed that with them, uh, Ryan, uh, reached out to Jake Hagan. I think he came in and presented to you as one of the new drainage engineers he, uh, broke off from Bolton and Meek. He's going to give us an idea of maybe a way to calculate the, the monetary risk, uh, for drainage tile. Um, it might be a situation where we might contract with him, and obviously we would like to see them pay for that contract.
Right.
Um, just kind of like what the CO two pipeline would do, um, if that's a situation, and then, hey, if it comes up with the money, monetary amount that they don't want to put into an escrow account for us, that's up to them.
Right.
Um, I also discussed with them, their, one of their claims was, uh, that an asphalt roller puts more energy into the ground than a, uh, their, their vibratory compactor. Uh, I had multiple conversations with them on Friday about that process, and I said, if you want to go test that, we can go down to Hamilton County this next week, um, they're doing an asphalt project right now, and they're, yeah, we'll, we'll do a walkway test. No, you're just going to put your sensors in the ground, we're not going to touch anything about the process for, for asphalt going down.
Right.
That thing will just drive by, it doesn't sit in one spot, that's the difference between a roller compactor and this compactor sending vibrations into the ground. It doesn't sit for twenty seconds in one spot and just vibrate.
Right.
So I also reached out to asphalt paving industry this morning, uh, Dan Wade, uh, he's, he works for the asphalt paving industry. Um, I've got multiple directions that I can go there, I'll call back, uh, Alan Burbisky Engineers, they were the, um, subcontractor or the contractor for the counties when we did that test over for Dodge. Um, I'm also going to call the, their sub up in Minnesota that they brought in, um, and then also my soils, my soils professor, uh, is doing, um, they have a roller compaction project going on in Iowa right now, where they're roller compacting and seeing where soft spots are in gravel roads. And they're doing that project currently, so I was going to call him and say, okay, what kind of vibrations are you putting in the ground? Do you worry about, um, the tile and culverts going over those, so?
Okay.
But is it the roller compactor, or is it the grinder? You know, when they can start milling and they're grinding out asphalt?
It was the asphalt roller that he was saying, the steam, what he called steamroller, what's, it's not a steamroller anymore, it's an asphalt vibratory solid.
And that's what he referred to when you and I were speaking with them, was he said that that put more
Energy.
Energy into the ground than, than their process.
And that's.
For their miles.
Yeah, so, uh, but I think his idea of what energy it's putting into the ground was, is that, that they're, they're trying to do apples on apples where that roller compactor is staying in one spot like their compactor.
Right.
It doesn't do that, it is rolling, that's why, so, I was going to ask, uh, they are going to reach out to me this week and see if they want to run down to Hamilton County and put some sensors in the ground and see it, maybe it's just one of, it's one step further to possibly
Yeah.
lowering that, that limit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think the one thing is, is that we need to make sure that our citizens, like, are protected, is, is the drainage districts are protected, the tile are protected, the culverts are protected, so that there's no additional cost to the citizens of Wright County, to the taxpayers.
Right.
It's all it is, yeah, so. I mean.
Okay, so, uh, my desire is to get that information out to the public, uh, that we are having these discussions, um, but, but that will actually they would actually come in and
Yes.
and.
If we needed to modify the road use agreement, they, they, we would present that this is the decisions and the, the external decisions that have been made.
Yep.
Not really external, the additional decisions that are made to protect the Wright, Wright County infrastructure.
Okay.
So, that's, you would have to make that decision. I would bring the road use agreement, we would say, hey, it's an amendment to the, the road use agreement to go down to maybe twenty five feet, fifty feet, or a point five PPV, peak particle long C.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you, yep.
Because, I mean, I found it very interesting, I think it could be, um, you know, if there is hydrogen in the ground, um, the dangers of it is extremely flammable, it's dreamy, um, they, the pipe, uh, is a, a different construction of a pipe, it's a thicker walled pipe, um, they don't want to go more than like ten miles, I think it was, or something, for transportation of it through a pipe, and that, um, the, um, uh, they, they have no, uh, use of eminent, they cannot use eminent domain on any of it, um, and so you know, at, at some point, we have to look at, for like economic development purposes, as to, you know, what can hydrogen do?
Possibly.
The possibility of it for Wright County, and, um, I've been trying to, and I can't get ahold of anybody yet at the Department of Revenue, uh, when they were talking about a severance tax credit, uh, where monies would come to the county, it's kind of like a royalty. Um, and, uh, and, and whether any county is ge- getting that right now.
They say Webster County.
They.
Currently.
But they haven't got, gotten any.
Oh, you need to help. They, they've put it in place.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, um, but, I mean, even trying to research it on the Department of Revenue's website, I can't find uh, information on how the who, what, where's wins.
Oh, it's a flex, maybe.
Yeah, and, and the amount and, and how it's set up, so, um, still researching that. And, um, I had seen, let's see what day was that? Wednesday, I'd seen Mark Thompson, Representative Mark Thompson, and I gave him some of this information also, so that he's aware of it.
Anything else?
I have, uh, CFO meeting on Thursday.
Anything else for the board?
Let's do it, Jerry.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, now we will act as drainage trustees. I need an approval of the tentative agenda.
Let's do it, approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Courtney, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting?
So the last meeting was July twenty first, twenty twenty five. The Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees to the drainage districts with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Pluse via telephone, Lynn Luke's, Asher Bosch and Betty Ellis. Also present were Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties were Robert Watson, the Wright County Monitor via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Pluse to call the meeting to order, motion carried. Motion by Ellis and seconded by Luke's to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on July fourteen, twenty twenty five were read and approved with corrections. Drainage claims for payment were approved, there were four work orders that were reviewed and approved. There were D thirty six lateral A in section three of Dayton Township for a Bieber dam that needs removed. DD thirty six sub one on the main in section three of Dayton Township for a broken tile and collapsed culvert restricting water flow. Uh, the next one was DD two nineteen in section twenty eight of Norway Township for two washouts. And the last one was DD ten on the main open ditch in section thirty five of Norway Township for a washout. Morris presented the following drainage invoice, it was for Webster County Auditor for the Joint Drainage District forty six dash ninety two public hearing notice mailings for the total of eleven dollars and thirty eight cents. Motion McLoose and seconded by Bosch to sign and approve invoice for payment, motion carried. Motion by Ellis and seconded by Pluse to set September eighth, twenty twenty five at ten a.m. as the date and time for the public hearing on repairs needed to DD sixty two open ditch, motion carried. Morris asked that she, or Morris said that she watched the DD thirty six lateral C ditch following a concern from a neighboring landowner small rocks and boulders being left on the ditch bank and entered his field. Numerous pictures were taken on the south side of the ditch between the field and the top edge of the ditch. Pluse asked Morris if there was any information to share from the summer IDDA drainage meeting, Morris shared that one of the top discussions was held on the new si- on new Senate File five ninety three, an act for an act providing for the preparation and filing of a district parcel record that identifies all parcels contained within a drainage or levy district that is part of a county. Motion by Luke's and seconded by Bosch to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? Stand approved as read. Claim.
We have the one claim for the Webster County Auditor for the eleven dollars and thirty eight cents for the public hearing mailings.
Let's do it, please.
I'll start with.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Open forum to the public for drainage, uh, districts. Review and act on any drainage work orders.
Uh, we have one work order for today. This is for Dean's area and DD thirty six on lateral B in section fifteen of Lake Township. This was reported by Dex Decker. Uh, it is reported as a blowout on the south side of the ditch, and he has requested that it be taken care of after harvest season. Um, and he also requested that Anderson Tower Care be the contractor, because he has another one that's um, out in that area that he had previously reported, and Anderson is on that one as well. Yep.
Review and sign a open drainage invoices.
Well, we have three invoices, the first one is for the Wright County Monitor. This is for publication of the public hearing for JDD forty six dash ninety two. The amount of this invoice is for seventy one dollars and twenty six cents. The next invoice is for Eagle Grove Eagle, this is also for the publication of the public hearing and their paper, and this is for eighty two dollars and twenty four cents. And then the last one is for Aaron's Brothers Tiling for the work order done in Grange District two thirty two on the main in section eleven of Lincoln Township. Um, it was a concrete tile that was going through some peat that was give, or giving out. Um, Dean, this one you had checked with them on and gotten an estimate on approximately two hundred and sixty feet of dual wall plastic. And Aaron stated that when they got in there, they noticed that a lot of it had already been replaced, so they didn't have to do the extensive work that they thought that they were going to have to do, so our invoice actually only came in at nine hundred and twenty dollars for that.
And I called Rob this morning just to verify, and he said that it looked like, uh, when Mansky had been in there on a previous work order, that they had replaced, uh, a bunch of it with a dual wall. When Mansky had been in there on a previous work order, that they had replaced uh a bunch of it with a dual wall. So, they made several repairs, uh, and that's, I think it was. Uh, the estimate was ten thou- ten to twelve thousand dollars, um, and the invoice was less than a thousand, I believe.
Okay, receive reclassification petition for Drainage District one ninety-four lateral one B.
Do you wanna make a motion to approve those invoices?
Sorry. Second, all in favor? All eyes.
Okay, now the uh reclassification petition. Kevin Lehrman was in here last week talking about his property or his wife's property for Marilyn Lehrman. That is in DD one ninety-four lateral one B, uh, if you recall.
What township seven?
Um, I don't know if there's multiple townships, so I did not look.
I just wanted to know where.
Approximately in the county.
Gotcha. I'd have to pull up the map to tell you. I couldn't.
I'll work on it while you.
Okay.
Continue.
Um, two, three years ago, we had this project that was done, um. A bit farther north where the open ditch was, uh, there was the tile line that connected to the south end of the open ditch. That uh needed some repairs and worked on. It was a project that we had an engineer on and it went out to bid. Um, this lateral one is what it was previously state called. Uh, was reclassified as well as a couple other tile lines that were out there. When it was reclassified on this specific line, it was split up from lateral one to lateral one, A, B, and C. And at that time, uh, this landowner did not realize, he stated that. Um, he was gonna be receiving benefit from this lateral one B line, and it was to the extent that it was. Um, for the area that it was covering. Um, he has some concerns, um. About where his water actually comes in at along the tile line and, um. Any work potentially being done farther down the line that he doesn't feel. Affects him. He doesn't feel like he receives any benefit from. So, he has filed a petition. Um, and or his wife has filed a petition to have this uh DD one ninety-four lateral one B line reclassified. And this was dated on the twenty-third. There is no work that needs to be done. It's just he's requesting a reclassification to review the benefits. That each landowner along that line receives and potentially see if he can break it up a little bit more. My concern with doing this is we're gonna open up a can of worms if we start looking at. Breaking laterals down farther and farther. Could potentially be opening this up to anybody in the county coming in and saying, well, I don't receive benefit from repairs up here. I think this lateral needs to be reclassified, and we could be doing a lot of that. We gotta kind of use best judgment on. Um, how much of an area we're going to include in laterals. Uh, if if we don't, otherwise it could be landowners coming in and saying, oh, we've got hundred-foot sections. That are all labeled their own and have their own classification. Uh, we tried explaining to Kevin that's. Um, a benefit of having the district's classification as it stands now. That there's more people within that classification, so any charges to that lateral, it is spread amongst multiple landowners. And if that is to be reclassified and reduced down, then there's gonna be fewer landowners that'll be assessed for any charges that are done. So, their assessment amounts would be higher. But at this point in time, we just have the the reclassification petition. Uh, for you to receive, and then we will put it on next week or the following week. To potentially appoint an engineer on that project. Um, I have sent off an email to our drainage attorney at the recommendation of McClure. Who was the one that did the report two, three years ago when this project was done. Um, and it was his recommendation to reach out and just see what his thoughts are. Because of the potential for opening up a can of worms.
And what does that cost? Have the engineer do the reclassification or look into it?
Fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
So, that'll.
Commissioners come back in again and public hearing. So, works. And he's aware of that. Kevin is the landowner that put this petition in.
Do we need to put this out to everybody else? What's going on?
We will. At this point in time, it's just a matter of just receiving the the petition. You're not. Uh, making any official decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, when it comes time to that. Um, doing that, bringing in the engineer and getting his report and his recommendation on everything, then yeah, we will have.
I'm still looking.
Yeah, it is Boom Township section.
That could get voted down as well too, right?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I don't really like doing classifications. Uh, without having work done. If there was a work project that was done. Um, and and so that the the classification, everything's done.
Make sure everybody's paying for the benefits from that work is being done.
Um, is this the one that they really struggled because there was a really low line and they couldn't get enough depth in the tile?
That was the cause of the project two, three years ago, yes.
And then, didn't we do a classification at that time? Yes.
The classification is only a couple of years old.
Yes. Yep, it was done in twenty twenty-one. November twenty twenty-one was when that classification was done.
And on that classification, did they just do lateral one and 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 then have branches up? When they did the classification, or did they just do it as a whole district?
The lateral one was what it was previously before the project labeled as. During this project, lateral one was then split up into three and made as lateral one A, lateral one B, and lateral one C. This concern for this landowner is on the lateral one B line, which is the larger of the three. And he did not realize.
Because he is a majority landowner on that, or?
Hmm, he's got three parcels in there, two of which are quite small. Uh, the third one is a bit more substantial, but it's still under fifty percent.
I thought you're here. And the classification, I'm sorry if you said it all already, but uh, the classification broke out. The laterals already.
Yes.
No.
One, A, B, and C.
Yes. So, the petition would potentially be taking lateral one B and make the lateral one B one, one B two.
Yeah, I would be opposed to that.
I would too.
Um, Lehrman. So, one property, he has gets a one point zero nine percent. Uh, benefited acres. And. Percent of classification is point two. The next property is a twenty-three point nine three benefited acres with a six point nine percent classification. And the third one is. Uh, thirty-nine benefited acres at forty-seven point four percent classification. That is the largest of the three. Otherwise, the other two are under ten percent classification.
I'm just uh reading through four sixty-eight point forty-one, which is assessment for lateral bitches. Reclassification of benefit of benefited lanes. And actually forty is the rules for classification.
And he is willing to come in and explain why he is requesting this petition if. The trustees so choose to. Um, want him here to explain that.
Did he explain to you why he wanted to?
Yeah. The, if there's work farther down the line, that is. Cause all the water flows north on this one, so if there's work farther south from where his um tile line connects in. There's work done down there. He doesn't feel that he receives any benefit for that because his water doesn't come in until farther north.
But it still comes in.
But his water utilizes that portion of the.
Yes, and he's, he's fine with that portion where his property comes in. It's just everything else farther south. Before his water comes in.
Yeah. So, he's closer to the ditch and the outlet.
Yep, so. This is the, I'll come up there and show you guys too. Um, so, this right here is where his property is, and there's acreage here, then you got the rest of the forty and then this forty. He's okay with this right here where his tile line comes in and connects to this lateral, this red line. And it comes all the way down here. He's okay with this portion up in here, but if there's work done down here, he doesn't feel he receives benefit. And that's why he wants to.
Does he receive any benefit on that, or?
He would have to pay for work, right?
He would have to.
Because that's the main.
So, here is the beginning of lateral one B.
Yeah.
And it ends down here. Can you see Dean? Or Lynn? Starts up here, ends down here. Um, on the south end, the water comes all the way up here and dumps. His property is right here, the three parcels, got the acreage, the rest of the forty and this forty. He's okay with this line here where his water comes in and being assessed for this chunk, but his concern. Is if there's work done down here in the bottom, that he doesn't receive any benefit from that, so he wants to have this reclassified.
Uh, I would assume that that is, that that was taken care of in the reclassification, but I uh. I would be interested in finding out from the engineer that did the right classification if that was actually taken into account. Because I understand now what he's.
Yeah.
Saying, yes.
I did reach out to McClure already, kind of give him a heads up and let them know that we got this um request. And explain to him what the landowner was wanting to do, why the request was put in. And asked if there was a rhyme or reason as to why the classification was laid out as it was two, three years ago. Um, he said that they take into effect or an account the amount of area and amount of landowners. That are put into that lateral, um, as well as who receives benefit from it. It's ultimately the trustee's decision on if you want it broke out more than that or not.
So, essentially what what he's asking for is the. What would be, I think according to that picture, the southern part of that main. Making that a lateral itself so that it it has its own classification.
Yes.
And and the laterals that come in downstream of that. Would only be paying for the benefit they received from uh the outlet of their water.
But you'll still have an issue if this goes through. If you've got a landowner that comes in right here in the junction. Of these other laterals, and then there's work done down here, these landowners could come in as well and say.
But that's the main, right? What, when you're saying way at the far south, is that part of the main?
All that lateral one that was reclassified into one A, one B, one C, there is farther north the main. And then it goes into the open ditch.
Because.
Cause you got a main tile up in here. And you got your open ditches here.
Okay.
Then you got your mains, which was split. There was just one main before and they split it. And then you've got your laterals that come off, and you've got your lateral one, which was previous. That is now lateral one A.
So, you have lateral one that comes all the way down. Is that the red line?
No, lateral one started here.
Yeah.
Came down all the way over here and all the way down to here.
Okay.
That was split. Now, this first little portion here is literally one A. The red is lateral one B, and this blue down here is lateral one C. So, it's split into three segments.
I'll call you.
I thought, I thought this looked like A, B, and C.
There is another one. See, you have a lateral one A, one B, one C, and you have a lateral B one. C one. They just flip off the numbers. This one is a bit confusing.
Okay, so anyway, when work is done down here. And and he is part of that. When they did the classification for this down here, they took into effect these landowners here. They have it. So, he's, that's already been. I know that he doesn't want to pay, but he does get benefit. For the entire ditch, main, or I almost call that a main because everything branches off of it. And so, that was in the classification, I'm sure.
Yeah.
They're gonna tell you that it was taken into consideration. I don't know that.
I believe that that's probably right, yes.
So.
Cause that's. Um, so here's the larger parcel.
Okay.
And then here's the two smaller ones. And according to that classification, he receives benefit on all three of those tracks. Whether or not, you know, that benefit is calculated because he's on that northern end of it and.
Hundred percent is so minimal.
On that south end, right?
Was the whole thing.
Yeah, but it'd still be minimal since he's closer to the. Ditch or wherever the water ends up at.
I mean, it it's possible that if that lateral one B is split, we'll just say in half. That he has the benefits in the top half and the north half. And he has no benefits in the south half, it's possible, but how far down do you wanna start splitting all these laterals?
I don't. I mean, the the classification was just done two years ago.
Right.
So, how do we resolve this? Do we just deny the petition or uh? We bring.
I would like to hear back from. See what the attorney say and and what McClure says, and then we can act on it at that time. So, we can receive it today and and table discussion. Until uh a response back from the attorney and engineer.
That did the project.
That did the 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 project in twenty twenty-one.
Correct, yeah.
Go ahead, Sandy.
So, when that was reclassified, every landowner would have gotten information.
That's correct.
So, when you do that, they have a project on a reclassification, it's very particular in getting every landowners.
And they would have gotten, yeah, they would have had notification at that time also.
How much would his percentage be of of expense if something was done at that south end? It probably would be little or nothing, wouldn't it?
Less than half. It's his biggest parcel. He doesn't even get fifty percent benefit on that larger one that's closer.
So, his charge wouldn't be that much for any work they did up there.
No, and there's. One thousand point three, just under acres in that lateral one B classification.
Like you say, you open up a can of worms for everything.
It could, yes.
I mean, that's what a classification does, bringing down to the percentage of your benefit. And it's not like this classification is fifty years old, so.
Yeah. When that classification was done in twenty twenty-one, when we got that report, the notices went out for the public hearing. It was notated that the reports are available online. Um, they're made available to them. They can come to the meetings. All of that. And he did state that he was at the meeting. He just. Did not notice that.
Tell me your motion again.
Um, my motion would be to receive the class reclassification petition on DD one ninety-four lateral one B. And table further discussion until we get a response back from the uh drainage attorney and. Um, engineer that did the project in twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all eyes. Any else before the board on drainage?
Let's do it, Jerry, as drainage trustees.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, keep the water flowing.